Affair Disposal Districts, or A V R R D Ds, pronounced Averds, application for expansion of the Mount Carberry Secure Landfill located in Success, New Hampshire. My name is Sarah Yuhas Kern, and I'm the Assistant Director of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Waste Management Division. This evening, I'm serving as the Presiding Officer for this public hearing. We are physically located at Berlin City Hall, located at 168 Main Street in Berlin, New Hampshire. However, we're also using the GoToWebinar platform to offer participation in this hearing so that participants are able to join us from the location of their choice. My colleague Tara Albert is onsite with us in Berlin to facilitate the hearing software. Tara, at this time, would you please confirm that our audio and video connections are working?
Yes.
Thank you. I am now going to call the hearing coordinator. For the record, it is Thursday, December 16th, 2021. The time is 6:01 PM. We are assembled at the Berlin City Hall located at 168 Main Street in Berlin, New Hampshire. In addition to in-person participation, we are using the GoToWebinar platform to offer online participation to this hearing. The public hearing, the purpose of which is to receive comments on the application for expansion of the Mount Carberry Secure Landfill located in Success, New Hampshire, is now officially open and being recorded. Again, my name is Sarah Yuhas Kern, Assistant Director of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Waste Management Division, and I'm the Presiding Officer for this public hearing. During the hearing, I may refer to New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services as NHDES, the department, or DES. At this time, I'm going to provide an introduction to the GoToWebinar platform for our remote participants. Periodically throughout the hearing, I will provide instructions on how to use the GoToWebinar platform to participate remotely in this hearing. We will turn on and describe certain webinar functions when we're soliciting testimony. You'll notice an orange rectangle with a white arrow in the upper corner of your screen. Clicking this arrow will show the GoToWebinar dashboard that I will refer to when providing instructions further in the hearing. Right now, all attendees are muted with no video feed, and you should be able to see and hear NHDES staff. Attendees will remain in this state until the floor is open, at which time we will turn on and describe the functions of the webinar that will allow remote attendees to participate. Note that NHDES will manage the GoToWebinar software for the in-person participants. For remote participants, I'll provide detailed instructions on how you can request to speak when we open the floor. When you are unmuted and speaking, NHDES and all other attendees will hear you, but no video feed will be transmitted. If you're joining us as an attendee by telephone only, your participation is limited to listen only. We are not able to unmute you. However, later in the hearing, I will give instructions on providing written testimony if you would like to do so. We also have Julie Ashton of NHDES standing by to help remote participants if you need technical assistance. I'll read her phone number and email address now, and her contact information will be posted on the screen intermittently throughout the hearing. You can reach Julie Ashton by phone at 603-271-7837, or by email at julie, J U L I E dot A dot Ashton, A S H T O N, at DES dot N H dot gov. That was an overview of how to use the GoToWebinar platform to participate in this hearing. I'll provide more instructions later in the hearing. Now, I'd like to take a moment to introduce you to the team that we have supporting this public hearing. You see me in the center of the table. And with us online is Jamie Colby, Permit Engineer and Supervisor in the Solid Waste Management Bureau. So she's joining us remotely. To my left is James, we call him Jay Hargie, also of the Solid Waste Management Bureau. And beyond Jay is Mike Wimsat, Director of the Waste Management Division. To my right is Leah McKenna, Administrator of the Solid Waste Management Bureau. And supporting the hearing off-camera are Tara Albert of the Waste Management Division, and Jean Ronigan of the Department of Information Technology. And then, we also have, back at the office, Julie Ashton of NHDES, and Ray Robek of the Department of Information Technology. So thank you to everyone who's helping to support the hearing. Note that all participants online have the ability to listen in real-time to this hearing through the GoToWebinar platform. And when invited by the hearing officer, in-person and online participants will be able to speak through the GoToWebinar platform. Telephone participants, as I mentioned, are only able to listen to the hearing. In order to speak during the hearing, remote participants will need to register for and join the webinar from a computer, an iOS, Android, or Windows phone device, or you'll need to participate in the hearing in person here in Berlin City Hall. The public notice for this hearing, which includes a link to register for and access the hearing, is posted on the NHDES Solid Waste Management Bureau's webpage under Latest News section. We also have a few copies at the back of the room. If anyone experiences a problem with the GoToWebinar platform, please contact Julie Ashton by phone at 603-271-7837, or by email at julie dot A dot Ashton at DES dot N H dot gov. Next, I'd like to share a few important details about logistics. As you heard, we're using the GoToWebinar platform to provide a remote participation option. Please note that for in-person attendees, the emergency exits are located behind you, as well as to your left. And the restroom is located in the back of the room to your left. In the event of an emergency requiring evacuation, this hearing will be automatically closed. If it appears we can return to the building within a short time this evening and reopen the hearing, we will do so. If we cannot reopen the hearing tonight, and we have not cycled once through all the speakers requesting to be heard at the time of the evacuation, we'll endeavor to return to Berlin to reopen the oral public hearing at another date and time to be determined. And we will announce that to all persons on the service list and post it on the NHDES website. If we lose internet connectivity, we will endeavor to re-establish remote testimony. The hearing will continue in person. In addition to oral testimony, NHDES encourages the middle of written testimony. The public comment period for receipt of written testimony will remain open through January 7th, 2022, at 4 o'clock PM. Please submit written testimony as specified in the public hearing notice, which you can get from the back of the room. Please understand that the purpose of this hearing is to receive oral testimony to identify concerns of citizens and governing bodies of the host municipality, county, and district, and other affected persons on a solid waste permit application submitted by the Andersgoggin Valley Regional Refuge Disposal District, A V R R D D, or AVERD, to the Department of Environmental Services. In the permit application, AVERD is requesting that NHDES approve a modification of Solid Waste Facility Permit Number DES-SW-88-029 to authorize an expansion of the Mount Carberry Secure Landfill located on Bean Brook Road in Success, New Hampshire, into an area referred to as Phase 3A. Notice of this hearing was published in the Conway Daily Sun and Union Leader on November 2nd, 2021, published in the Coas County Democrat on November 3rd, 2021, published in the NHDES Municipal EcoLink Newsletter on November 30th, 2021, posted on NHDES's website, Twitter account, and Facebook page, and mailed to a Butters of the Facility, the host county, and other affected entities as identified and required by the Solid Waste Rules. If you're using the GoToWebinar, you can review a copy of the hearing notice by looking in the dashboard under the section titled "Handouts." It's also in the back of the room. The hearing notice includes the date, time, and place of this oral hearing and information for obtaining a copy of the application for review. It also provides instructions and the deadline for submitting written testimony. Now, let's review the hearing agenda. First, Jamie Colby, online, will provide a brief overview of the Solid Waste Permit Application process and the criteria the department must use to make its decision to approve or deny the requested permit modification. Jamie will also explain where we are in the application review process currently and what the next steps will be after this hearing. Second, a representative of AVERD will provide a description of the proposed landfill expansion and application. Then, we'll take a five-minute break. And immediately following the break, we will accept public comment on the application in an orderly fashion. Anyone wishing to make oral comments for the department to consider during its review of the application will have the opportunity to do so at that time. Jamie Colby will now provide information about the solid waste permitting process.
Thanks, Sarah. Good evening, everyone. As Sarah stated, my name is Jamie Colby, and I am a Permit Engineer in the Solid Waste Management Bureau at DES. Next slide, please. For context, the Solid Waste Management Bureau regulates the management of solid waste, primarily by regulating the facilities that handle solid waste. We accomplish this through administration of a permitting system as required by the Solid Waste Management Act, RSA 149M. Andersgoggin Valley Regional Refuge Disposal District, or AVERD, operates a solid waste landfill in Success, New Hampshire that is permitted by the department. And as authorized by RSA 149M, the department has adopted administrative rules that apply to solid waste management facilities statewide. As allowed by those rules, AVERD has submitted an application to the department to expand its existing solid waste landfill in Success. At this time, I will briefly explain how the department reviews an application like this. In a few minutes, we will hear a presentation from AVERD representative that provides details on the proposal, including AVERD's perspective on the application. Next slide, please. DES's role at this time is to review this application to determine whether it meets the requirements of RSA 149M and the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules for Solid Waste Management, and to issue a decision on the application. Generally speaking, reviewing of an application like this occurs in two steps. The first step involves a completeness determination. That is, we evaluate whether or not we have all of the information required by rule. The second step involves a technical review, when we evaluate the technical details of the application and come to a decision. This technical review time period is also when we collect and consider public comments. The first step of this process has been accomplished. The department has determined that AVERD's application for expansion is complete. Once we do that, we put out a notice stating that the application is available for public comment, and we schedule a public hearing. That is where we are now. We are requesting public comment on AVERD's application for expansion, which comments we will consider when making a decision on the application. We have not yet made a decision. While we are receiving public comments, the application is concurrently undergoing a technical review. During technical review of an application such as this, we look at the requirements specified in the New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules for a landfill expansion, including siting, design, construction, operations, and closure of the facility. For example, during review of the design, we evaluate whether the proposed expansion includes liners, leachate collection systems, and stormwater management features that meet the technical specifications and performance criteria of the rules. The applicable siting, design, construction, operation, and closure requirements for landfills are found in Chapter ENV SW 800 of the New Hampshire Solid Waste Rules, which incorporates by reference various other rules found in Chapters ENV SW 900 through ENV SW 1100, as well as ENV SW 1400. Once we have received your comments and completed a technical review of the application, including the waiver application, we will issue a final decision. We have three options. We can deny the application. We can approve the application outright. Or we can approve the application with conditions. The Solid Waste Rules identify the explicit grounds for denial. The rules and the Solid Waste Statute are available online through either the DES website or the state legislature's website. That is a brief overview of the application review process. Sarah?
Thank you. Next, Representatives of AVERD will now present a description of the planned landfill expansion for which they're seeking a solid waste permit modification.
Hello, everyone. Make sure I got my pointer here. So my name is Paul Schmidt. I'm with CMA Engineers, representing. I've been doing the engineering for AVERD. And I will get right to the presentation. So, as many people know, but as an introduction, so Andersgoggin Valley Regional Refuge Disposal District is a municipal-based solid waste disposal district organized under legislation in the state and represented by the towns of City of Berlin, towns of Dummer, Errol, Gorham, Jefferson, Mylan, Northumberland, Randolph, Stark, and unincorporated places represented by the Coas County. So if you live in one of these communities, you are directly represented on the AVERD, and they have a board. Each town has a representative on the board, or each community. So the district was formed in 1999. Initially, they ran a solid waste transfer station, and they still have a solid waste transfer station in Berlin on the other side of town. And they bought the Mount Carberry landfill from the paper mills in 2002. So the Mount Carberry landfill, again, the district purchased it in 2002. It was initially constructed by and for disposal waste from the paper and pulp mills, primarily the mill in Gorham and the old pulp mill here in Berlin. So that was its original purpose. And and it was again, the district acquired it after a bankruptcy proceeding. It was put up for sale. And so currently, approximately 67 acres have been developed or being filled now. And the total original permitted footprint from the original process is approximately 114 acres. And this is what we're presenting today. And the purpose of the hearing is an expansion, a planned expansion that's part of a regular progression of what was originally planned. So the waste type, the landfill does take municipal solid waste. And the W is a municipal solid waste. So trash from, and does take construction and demolition debris waste. Continues to take mill wastes and sludges from the Gorham mill and other permitted waste, including some asbestos. But a conventional municipal solid waste landfill, the current landfill, the landfill is currently permitted is limited to taking a total of 305,500 cubic yards per year on average over a three-year rolling timeframe. Later in the presentation, I'll be, that's not proposed to change. So the, but that's what they're currently permitted. And it's located in Success, but it's accessed by the entrances located in Hutchins Street in Berlin. So this is an aerial view with City of Berlin in the center, and the landfill is down there on the bottom right. I do have a pointer for those in the audience. And this is the entrance off Hutchins Street, if anybody might be familiar. So current landfill operations are in what's called stages one and two. And they're currently in stage five and six. And we have the next planned expansion that's already been permitted. And we'll start, we had a hearing on this several years ago, is to fill the top stage, stage 12. And that gets us, that stage is 2.3 years of life. So the current landfill is currently permitted has a maximum elevation of 1,818 feet. And a current filling rate, and at the maximum allowable current rate, filling rate that, as the current footprint, has expected to reach capacity between approximately 2026 to 27, at, again, current rates. So this is a plan, get an aerial view of the landfill itself in phase one and two, again, as we can see, are the constructions are currently being filled. Expansion area, Phase 3A, that's the purpose of the hearing today, is this footprint. And for reference, this is the site entrance. And the city of Berlin is to the west and a little bit to the north of this. So on this plan, it's to the upper left-hand. So the expansion is kind of on the backside from the city. And to the extent that the residential neighborhoods are, would be up in this corner. So it's kind of in the back. And there is a, the original permitted footprint did include a, it was a Phase 3, which we've now separated into an A and B. So there is long-term planning for a future development of a Phase 3B, which is shown there in red. So again, so the Phase 3A expansion specifically is again 24.1 acre horizontal expansion, 4,992,000 cubic yards of disposal capacity, which corresponds to 16.3 years at, again, the maximum. That would be if they're filling at the maximum rate they could. They fill at a lesser rate, it would be a longer life. And the maximum elevation is proposed to be 1,830 feet in elevation, which is 12 feet above the current permitted. So the, this is mostly a horizontal expansion with a small increase in the, as the waste comes up over top of the old. So it's an increase of 12 feet. And again, we want to be, we want to be clear. So the application that the district applied for, to keep the waste acceptance rate, the maximum base acceptance rate, the same. This is to extend the time to continue operations beyond the 2026. It's not to increase the amount of waste they can take in. It's to, it's to expand, you know, just progression, keep the and, and so they, so the application is for to keep the same limit of 305,500 cubic yards on average as a max, as a maximum filling rate. So since there's no significant change in the amount of waste that's being taken in, there's no significant change in the traffic proposed. This is another view of the landfill in darker green is the phase, because again, it's the Phase 3 footprint. And the lighter green to bluish is some of that waste. There's a horizontal, and as that gets filled, some of that comes up over the existing landfill to make it efficient use of the space that we have. And that's in the, and then the, in this, in this figure, the orangish-yellowish color is the current footprint that, that, once this expansion gets started, that's the area that's filled and doesn't, doesn't change. And that's the area being filled now. But this is a side view through the picture of the side view through the expansion. So again, the colors are the same with the green being the Phase 3 expansion. And again, that comes up over top of the existing. And in this, the the area that's approximately currently filled is the is the reddish color. And the space that will be filled over the next several years is the orangish-yellowish color. And again, you can see the height, the height is a moderate increase in total height there compared to the existing. This is a table of, a table of, again, a lot of the same numbers they've already presented, the Phase 1 and 2, which again, has, once it's full, have operated approximately a total of 37 years. This landfill's been there, been there for quite a while now. And the, through about 2026, 27, Phase 3A is adding 16 years, approximately plus, depending on how, what rate they fill it at. And again, the possible future Phase 3B has, is approximately 22, 28 acres and would add 10-plus, approximately 10-plus years. Again, that's down in the future, quite a ways in the future. But there is long, there is long-term planning here that the district has done as a municipal entity. So a couple of other, just points to, with respect to the three applications, there are designs that were submitted as part of the application, which are all part of a regular expansion of a landfill. So within the landfill is the, there's a, we have to expand the landfill gas collection system so that we're collecting the gas from the areas that are expanded into. And that's kind of a normal operation. So there's designs for that. There's designs for managing the stormwater runoff from all of these changes. There are designs for, to manage the leachate in the new cell, a new pumping station that's specific to the new cell, which again, is fairly conventional for a landfill of this type. Some of the, some of the infrastructure that there's really no proposed changes. The, there's a landfill gas system that flares the gas that's existing now that was actually recently upgraded. So that has enough capacity for the entire expansion and doesn't require a major upgrade to that system. That's the system that flares the gas once it's collected. They have borrow pits right now that that'll continue operation. The leachate disposal is now disposed to the city of Berlin's wastewater treatment plant. There's no proposed change to that. And that summarizes the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. In a few moments, we will take a break. However, I would like to explain the ground rules for the testimony portion of the hearing and provide instructions for delivering oral testimony. Our objective this evening is to give everyone who wishes to speak a reasonable opportunity to do so. After you've provided your name in accordance with the upcoming instructions, I will call upon people to speak in the order displayed on the screen. Based on the number of attendees, I request that you limit your testimony to five minutes. Jay will be monitoring the time and will show you the yellow card when you have one minute left. When you see the yellow card, please start wrapping up your testimony. When Jay shows the red card, that means your time is up. Please graciously yield the floor without significant delay so that I can call the next speaker in line. We're frequently asked whether a speaker can yield their time to another speaker of their choice. I want to make it clear that this practice will not be allowed in this hearing. Instead, we intend to cycle through the list of names more than once to allow individuals additional time to provide comments. In other words, the person you might wish to yield time to will be able to obtain additional time to testify. They'll just need to request to testify and wait for their turn in line. When I call your name, if you decide you do not wish to speak at that time, let me know, and we'll place your name at the end of the list to be called on after all the other speakers have been cycled through. If you're in Berlin and wishing to turn in written testimony this evening, please place it in the designated box to be receipt stamped and secured as part of the official record. You'll find that box on the back table. If you're accessing the hearing remotely, please submit written testimony as instructed in the notice of public hearing. As a reminder, a copy of the hearing notice is available in the GoToWebinar dashboard under "Handouts" and on the NHDES website. We often receive questions about how someone can receive notice when NHDES issues a decision on the application. Everyone who's registered to attend the hearing remotely or who filled out a testimony card with their contact information will be placed on the list for receiving notice when a decision on the application is issued. Those folks who did not fill out a testimony card or register for the hearing but would like to receive notice of the decision can add their name to the sheet at the back of the room. the room in, in this room, or contact the Solid Waste Management Bureau by email at swpublic commenting at des.nh.gov, or by calling 603-271-2925. This hearing is being recorded. Therefore, during the public testimony session, please speak clearly and start your testimony by stating your name and your town. If you forget to do so, I'll briefly interrupt you to remind you. If you're here in Berlin and would like to provide oral comments, please fill out a yellow speaker or testimony card, which is on the table in the back of the room, and place it in the box in the back of the room, if you haven't already done so. NHDES staff will add your name to the list displayed on the screen. If you're accessing this public hearing remotely, please listen closely to the following instructions on how to provide oral testimony using the GoToWebinar platform. As a reminder, these instructions are not applicable to our telephone-only attendees who are in listen-only mode. For oral testimony, we will enable the GoToWebinar question function. Using this function, you'll let NHDES know you would like to provide oral testimony by entering your identifying information into the GoToWebinar question box. I'll walk through specific instructions on how to do this in a moment. Please note that we're not actually soliciting questions to be answered at this time. We're using GoToWebinar's question function to identify who would like to be called upon to provide oral testimony and to assist us in tracking testimony. Please enter only your name and town in the question box. The information typed in the question box is not your testimony, and you do not need to type any substantive content in this box. In order to be added to the list to provide oral testimony, you must enter your name and town. We traditionally attempt to provide state senators and representatives the opportunity to speak first, and we would like to do so during this hearing. If you're a senator or representative and would like to be called upon early in the queue, please start your question with senator or representative. We will attempt to put you up front in the queue. The question function of GoToWebinar is now enabled. Tara, can I confirm it's enabled? Yes, thank you. You should see the question box in the GoToWebinar dashboard. If you want to provide testimony, please type your name and town in the question box and hit enter to submit. We'll be monitoring the list of attendees who are submitting this information, and we'll place your name in the queue after we receive all the required information. Remember that if you need technical assistance with getting onto the list to provide testimony, Julie Ashton of DES is available by phone or email. I'll say her contact information now. You can reach Julie by phone at 603-271-7837, or by email at julie.hasten@des.nh.gov. We'll take a short break now to get the name, the first names on the list, and we will be back in five minutes. ... and many of the issues can be emotionally charged. Therefore, I ask participants to honor this process of being able to hold a public hearing and hear differing viewpoints or concepts by extending each other courtesy and civility. We'll begin hearing oral testimony at this time. I will call on you one at a time, and we're beginning with a remote participant. For in-person participants, NHDES will manage the microphones in this room. For remote participants, when I call your name, please ensure that your microphone is not muted and that you speak clearly so we can hear you. You'll begin by stating your name and town and then proceed with your comments. Our first person to testify will be Adam Finkel.
Thank you, I just unmuted myself. Could someone wave to confirm I'm audible? Thank you so much. Adam Finkel from Forest Lake Road in Dalton. I just have a couple of questions, I won't take nearly the full five minutes. Read through the application this week and got a couple of questions about groundwater pollution issues, which of course don't have to be answered tonight. One is, I noticed in the monitoring results, one of the things that popped out was the compound called tetrahydrofuran, and I'm just wondering why, if anyone understands why that was elevated, and if people there think that this is due to a direct deposition of that material, which presumably should not have been deposited as a hazardous waste, or could it have possibly been formed inside the landfill as a product of interaction with other chemicals? I'm just wondering if there's any concern about materials being deposited there over, over time in the, in the past that should not have been legally put there. Then I just had a couple of questions about, which I will submit in writing anyway, about the, mostly the groundwater flow calculations. I think there may be a typo on the 2009 hydrogeologic evaluation, which was an appendix to the application, having to do with the, the algebra involved in getting the, the flow rate in bedrock. It says 50 feet per day, and I think it may be five feet per day if you do the math right, but I'll send that in, in writing. But I certainly appreciated the, all the information about how this landfill certainly appears to be in a good location geologically, the flow rates are very low in this area, and I appreciate all of the information about the time, time of travel of any polluted groundwater to reach Alpine Brook or the Andersgoggin, seems to be, you know, decades, which is good news. And I guess I just wanted to end by saying that it's clear to me that, that from the discussion early on in the report of the capacity issues and the timeline for the next 20 or 25 years, that if the state were able to increase its diversion rate from, from the 25% to the 40% rate, which is also modeled in the report, I think this one expansion alone would, would be ample to reduce any problem, any possible shortfall out into the 2030s and 2040s. So if this is deemed to be a complete and acceptable application, this, this one expansion alone, I think, could, could do a lot for any concerns about capacity issues into the, again, the 2030s and beyond, and it would continue, I think, to be a great resource for the towns in the North Country. My own town of Dalton has seen our net total cost for disposal go down because even though it's a little further to truck material from Dalton to Success as opposed to Bethlehem, the tipping fees are sufficiently lower, about 30% lower, that our town has saved money. So we appreciate having Carberry as a resource, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Tara, do we have others who have indicated they wish to testify? Okay. I would just like to give a moment in case there's anyone else online or in the room who would like to testify. Okay. Tara, would you confirm we're not getting any more requests to testify online? Okay. Anyone in the room with a show of hands, would you like to testify? Okay, seeing no one else who wishes to provide oral testimony, I'll prepare to close the hearing. Please understand that written comments can be, can be submitted to the department up to 4 o'clock PM on January 7, 2022. They can be emailed or submitted by mail, and directions for submitting written comments are provided in the public notice for this hearing. Before closing the hearing, I'm going to confirm that we're still connected to our remote participants. Tara, would you please confirm our connection? Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for taking time to participate in tonight's public hearing. The hearing is hereby closed at 6:47 PM.